Six P M. I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the Thursday, September ten, twenty twenty meeting of the Clive City Council. Would the clerk please call or all?
Mayor Sirksina.
Here.
Council members Klein.
Here.
Edwards.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Judkins.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Well, present and accounted for. Nice to have everybody here. Welcome staff and those joining us on the call. As has become our our practice recently, we've had a scout lead us in the pledge of allegiance. However, this evening, we're gonna have our esteemed city clerk, Matthew, lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight because we are we are short on scouts. So, Matthew, when you are ready, if you'd be so kind to lead us.
Yes, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you, Matthew, very much. Next item is approval of the agenda. I'm not aware of any changes.
Move approval.
Mayor, there is one scrivener's error that will need corrected.
I will correct that when we get down to consent items.
Thank you.
Second.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Michael. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? And that passes five to zero. Hold on, I'm adjusting my volumes here. Give me just a moment. I have a little problem hearing everybody. Okay, very good. Now, consent items, we do have one change under item P, which is the resolution approving transfer from the general fund, not the water fund, but the general fund to franchise fee Street Project Fund Clark Street, one hundred thousand dollars. So that is the change. I would take a motion.
Oh, no, yes, amended.
Second.
Second.
It's moved by Michael, seconded by Eric. Any discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote?
Now Weaver's vote to come in.
Yeah, it's not coming up for me for some reason. Hold on. Oh, there it came. I had to refresh, sorry.
And that passes five to zero. Thank you, council. All right, then, we moving on, we have four presentations this evening. The first will be multiple new police officers, which we're very excited about. And then we have three Public Works employees that will be introduced to us. We're gonna start out with Chief Vinema with the introduction of new police officers. Chief.
Thank you, your honor. As you saw in the consent agenda tonight, you've approved the pay rates and the starting dates for six new police officers. This is the largest addition we've ever had to the force, three new and three to replace retirements that have all happened this year. And I'm very pleased to report that that we have had a great pool of candidates and were able to secure six people that I think you're gonna be very proud of as as we move forward. I think in this this environment especially, it speaks to the reputation that the city of Clive and the Clive Police Department have that we've been able to attract such great candidates. I'll go ahead with the next slide. First candidate I want to our first new police officer I want to introduce is Maggie Jennet. She's got a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Iowa State. Maggie is already certified as an Iowa peace officer, having formerly been with the Ames Police Department. She also has experience as a police dispatcher for the both the Iowa State Patrol and the Story County Sheriff's Office. Next, we have Odessa Clark. Odessa has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Wayne State, Nebraska University. Most recently, he was a corrections officer in Lancaster County, Nebraska, and he comes from a law enforcement family, a great tradition. His brother, Devante Clark, is already a Clive police officer, and their dad is a longtime Sioux City police officer. And I think I think it speaks very well of how Devante has felt about working for Clive, that he would invite his brother to to join join our ranks. And Odessa is gonna start on September twenty eighth. The next new officer is Kyle Halsey. Kyle is a Illinois certified peace officer. He's currently working for the Illinois Department of Transportation. He will be able to test out of the law enforcement academy. He was formerly with the Calton County, Illinois Sheriff's Department, and he's even got experience as a canine handler. He's a U S Army MP formerly with two tours in Afghanistan. And I believe when he was quite young, right out of high school, he was an E M T. Next, we have Dylan Vento, also holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. His is from Purdue Global. He's a federally certified peace officer, and he's currently working for the Department of Veterans Affairs in Des Moines. He will also be able to test out of the law enforcement academy due to his certification, and he is a current Army National Guardsman. And he will be starting on September twenty one. Next is Blake Cranell. A lot of folks in Clive may recognize Blake, who holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Iowa State. He's a longtime Clive Parks seasonal employee. He is just finishing up his fifth season working for Clive Parks. They had great things to say about him, and he knew the culture of of the city of Clive. And when he wanted to go into law enforcement, he had his sights set pretty much only on Clive, and we're glad to have have him on board. He was also an intern with our department last year, and Blake starts on September twenty eighth. Last, we have Courtney Owen. Courtney's got a bachelor's degree in elementary education from Northwest Missouri State. She most recently has been the regional wellness coordinator for the Des Moines Y M C A. She spent a few years as a Grimes E M T and firefighter, and she's also been a personal trainer. And she starts on September twenty eighth. And for those of you who are keeping score and who it matters to, that's two ISU graduates and no Hawkeyes, so.
That's all that matters, chief.
Okay. So I'd be glad to take any questions anybody may have about those candidates, but we're starting them up the next three Mondays in a row staggering, so we can give each of them all the attention they deserve as they come on.
Well, chief, thank you. Counsel, questions or comments for chief? What a great looking group, and we're just so excited to have have them come on board this team. I'm gonna start with Councilmember Judkins. Any comments?
Yes, I'm so excited to meet everyone virtually. What a great group. We'd heard along the way that it was great, but I'm really impressed tonight. And welcome in particular to the women in the group. Glad to see it.
Thank you. Councilmember Judkins, Councilmember McCoy.
No, sir.
Mayor Protam Edwards.
Just echo what Susan said. I think we're all very excited with this great, great class that's coming in, and we're anxious to see them on the streets.
Councilmember Klein.
Yeah, mayor, just a couple of things that stand out. I echo the comments of of my fellow council members, but also I really like the fact that we've got several people that are already certified that can hit the streets very quickly. And I'm also impressed with both the diversity and the number of veterans, specifically Kyle and Dylan, that are joining our force. So welcome all. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Eric. Councilmember Weaver.
Yeah, nothing to add, but just welcome aboard and great job, chief.
Thank you.
So I would say officers Jennet, Clark, Halsey, Vento, Cranell, and Owen, welcome aboard. What a what a great group. What a what a culmination of diverse backgrounds and great that we've got even, you know, for parks of, you know, in we've got interns, we've got employees, we have great things happening, we have recertification, we have just a great group of new officers to add to this team. So I would add to everything the council has said, and again, welcome. Chief, thank you. Anything else this evening?
No, sir. We will come back at a later date, hopefully when we can be a little closer and do a ceremonial swearing in, so you can at least see them all together in the council chambers, even if we're not all there personally.
Excellent. Good. We'll look forward to that. Please keep us posted on that. Chief, thank you again, officers. Welcome aboard. Okay, we'll move to the next presentation item. We have we'll have three new Public Works employees. And Jeff, why don't you start us off?
Good evening, mayor and council. Very happy to be here tonight to introduce you to some of our new hires here in Public Works. The first one I want to talk about is a replacement for Steve Landheiss, who's been with us for almost thirty years. He's our Public Works administrator. Decided it's time for him to go and leave some big shoes to fill after a very, very, what I want to say here, be careful I put this because we had it was a very difficult decision. We had some very good candidates that applied for the position. After going through the process, we selected Jerry Freestone. Jerry's been with the city for twenty years, came here and started in parks, spent thirteen years in parks, he's been in Public Works for seven, the last three as supervisor of traffic. Again, he's got some big shoes to fill, and I'm very happy with the selection, and I'm very confident that he will be able to meet the challenge that he has before him. Gonna do it a little different. The next two, I'm just gonna briefly introduce. The intent would be for our new operations specialists that we bring them in and put them in front of you at some point after they start. But the first hire that we had, Clayton Chambliss, comes to us from, he's been the branch manager for Phelps Uniform, and then previously before that, he's with the United States Marine Corps. So we're very excited to bring him aboard. He'll be starting on September twenty eighth. In addition, Dylan Vilhauer comes to us. He was previously with the city of Tiffin Public Works Department, so he comes to us in public works experience. Looking forward to get him over here. He's gonna start on September twenty first. Again, I'm very pleased to meet those or introduce you to them, at least virtually, give you a chance to meet them sometime in the future. But we are gonna bring Jerry Freestone on here. He is with us tonight for the final presentation as he's the one that's been very involved in our right away fiber app and small wireless facilities. So bring him on and let him introduce himself and tell a little bit about his excitement to take this challenge. Jerry?
Good evening, council. Hi, this is Jerry. I am very excited for this opportunity to move up in Public Works. Looking forward to the challenges ahead. Just just excited about it.
Well, Jerry, we're proud of you, and congratulations on this promotion for you, and well deserved, and looking forward to to your leadership. And Clayton and Dylan, congratulations to you as well. Glad to have you joining this team, and we're excited as we, you know, as we we had key positions that are that are truly needed in our Public Works Department. So again, welcome. I would welcome, I guess, any comments from council at this point. Well, hearing none, again, welcome. Jeff, thank you. Anything else we need to know this evening?
No.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Jeff. And everyone, I got so excited to introduce these new team members, I jumped right over our our opportunity for citizens' presentation. And so I'm gonna insert that into the agenda now, since we're we're kinda in presentations anyway. And this is the opportunity for anyone joining us in the meeting to address the council on an item that is not currently on the agenda tonight. Is there anybody here to do so? And if so, please let Pete know so that we can get you get you onto the call.
And folks, there are a couple ways to let me know. If you're participating by video or by computer, you'll be able to use the chat function. You can send a chat to me, or you can click on the participant icon in that bottom black row at the bottom of your Zoom screen. And when you click on that, a separate screen will pop open, and there will be a raise hand function, except for everybody, except for the co-hosts who can already unmute themselves. We do have one person participating tonight by phone. Now I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna unmute them very quickly, see if they have any comments, mayor. So caller at two two eight nine. I just asked if I could unmute you. If you could please if let us know if you have anything to offer tonight. Caller two two eight nine. Okay, mayor, I'm not hearing anything from that person, and I don't see any hands going up for comments.
Very good. We will seeing none. Then we're gonna proceed back to action items. And the item that we have this evening is the resolution approving the final plat for Tucker Club West eighteen. And Amanda, you're leading us in that.
Mayor, council, good evening. I will keep this pretty brief because this property has been in front of you a couple times over the last six or seven months. So as you know, we have the new come and go store that just opened on the corner of Hickman and one hundred and fifty sixth street. This is the plat that chops off the south part port, excuse me, portion of that property to create another outlot for another opportunity for development. We don't yet have a project that has formally submitted anything on that, but we do have the final plat ready for approval tonight. The partial vacation of the water main easement was taken care of at this July twenty third meeting, as we had already advertised notice for that public hearing. So at that time, we didn't have all the legal documents quite ready to go yet for approval of the final plat. We now have those, and staff has no further comments and would recommend approval.
Thank you, Amanda. Counsel, questions? John, I'll start with you.
No question, but I'll move approval to get it on the table.
Second.
It's moved by John, seconded by Eric. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the council please vote?
And Weaver? Oh, thank you.
And that passes five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item is a discussion item regarding the introduction of Metronet and the proposed work in the city of Clive. And Matt, you're gonna lead us off in that.
Hey, your honor, yeah, I'm gonna start off tonight, and then I'll turn it over to Joe Salerno with with Metronet. But then I'll share my screen here for the item that was included in the packet. So Metronet approached staff. Actually, it was earlier this year initially, just to inform us of their desire to come to this market. And then over the last couple of months, we've had some more direct meetings with them regarding their intention. And I'll let Joe kinda speak to the details of this of of coming to the city of Clive and some of our neighboring communities to the north to provide service. And so what we wanted to do tonight, we thought it was important to get this in front of the council in terms of giving Metronet an opportunity to introduce themselves. They are looking at a citywide build out and overbuild on our community of fiber to the home or fiber to the properties, to be commercial and residential properties. And so we wanted to make sure we got this in front of the council and then see what questions that you have for for Joe and his team about Metronet. And I know we had some items in the packet about this one pager that I'm showing on the screen. And then also, I know Joe has a video to show as well. So with that, just wanted to turn it over to Joe Salerno, who's the market manager for Iowa for Metronet, to introduce themselves and see what questions you all have. So with that, I'll turn it over to Joe.
Joe, I know you're with us. I saw your name on the hopefully you're having a problem unmuting.
Joe, you should be able to unmute yourself and share your screen. Bandwidth problems. Joe, if you're having troubles, if you could go ahead and email Matt.
Can you hear me now, guys?
Yes, we've got you now, Joe.
Okay, wonderful. I'm so sorry about that. I'm sorry. Yeah, so we're gonna show a video. But thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council members for having us here tonight. My name is Joe Salerno, and as Matt mentioned, I am the market manager here in the state of Iowa. I am filling in for Kathy Scheller, who has been working with Matthew and kinda giving him an update of Metronet and our lightning fast internet service. I'm filling in, but don't fret, because I'm very familiar with the area with Clive, as my wife is an alum of Drake University. And as I mentioned, I've been working in Iowa for the past two years when we first came to the market. The first market we came into was Bettendorf and Davenport, and those markets have been wildly successful for us. It started about two years ago. We've had about eighteen months of construction. And I gotta tell you, our construction ends at the end of this month. We do a monthly meeting with the city council, and it's bittersweet. We had a warm winter that allowed us to get through construction quickly and allow us to expand in other areas like Leclerc, Iowa. And we're looking at the quad, the Illinois side of the quad cities like East Moline, Rock Island, and a number of other cities. So I'm proud to be working in this state, growing this state, and it's been a lot of fun. Closer to Clive, about twenty five miles away, obviously, we launched in Ames on August first. That's been a great market for us. We're currently building out in Nevada, Iowa. And I also have a meeting on Monday in Gilbert, Iowa. So the Iowa markets continue to to join up and become Metronet communities. And very close to where you are, obviously, obviously, we would love Clive to be part of this. And we're working with Urbendale, Grine, Johnston, and Winter Heights as we speak. So everything that's going, you know, this, this was a great service and a great product a year ago, but given everything that's happened, even the past six months, I think this has proved positive that we're Zoom meeting right now, how things have changed and how, you know, having a robust infrastructure in in fiber internet is paying dividends and truly becoming a necessity. So I'm gonna take five to ten minutes to talk to you a little bit about that one sheet that you see up on the screen. But the first thing I want to talk about is to show you a video, and this will give you a great idea of exactly what our service does and how it is superior to others. So we're gonna play this, and I'll go over the presentation after that. So keep in mind on this one, fiber to the home. Go ahead, Matthew.
So what makes a hundred percent fiber so special? The answer is bandwidth. Think back ten years ago, when you weren't disappointed that a song took a few minutes to download. But today, your expectation is that the download should only take a few seconds. Expectations of technology and speed change with every day of the passage. Fiber optic connection to the home is the technology of the future, able to keep up with the rapid demands and expectations that consumers have today. One thing standing in the way of increasing expectations for internet speed is the outdated networks delivering contents in many homes and businesses today. These networks are limited in the amount of bandwidth they can provide to a home or business regardless of demand. Who hasn't been frustrated with buffering while watching Netflix or painfully long download while your family fights over the limited bandwidth available from your service provider? Think of the internet bandwidth as the water pressure in your home. Depending on the size of the pipe, water can flow at a certain rate, allowing your family to cook, bathe, do laundry, and water your lawn. Look, if this pipe is supplying water to all the houses in your neighborhood, and everyone needs the water at the same time, not everyone is going to be satisfied. This is comparable to what many households struggle with today when using internet service from their current service providers. With one hundred percent fiber optic connection, although it's as thin as a human hair, its capacity is more like a huge pipe. By altering the wavelength of light, fiber technology delivers streams of data to multiple homes and devices all at the same time with no loss in speed or load. Think of water flowing through an ever-expended pipe that allows everyone in the neighborhood to get the water they need and want at the same time as soon as they turn on a faucet. Metronet brings a one hundred percent fiber optic connection directly to your home when we service your city. What does this incredible bandwidth mean for you? Blazing fast internet that is ten to one hundred times faster than most available internet service offerings, and no more buffering for stream of content like Netflix and Amazon instant video. With an internet connection like this, multiple users are able to download and upload, share files, and stream audio and video all at the same time with virtually no effect on performance. Simply stunning TV quality. Other providers have to compress their television signal to deliver it over their networks. This can cause poor picture quality. With Metronet's one hundred percent fiber, more data flows through the network, meaning more data is being sent to your TV with less compression. This means your TV picture is crystal clear, but that you're watching in HD or standard definition. Clear, reliable phone. The benefits of bandwidth apply to phone technology as well. Whether it's your home phone or dozens of phones within your business, one hundred percent fiber optics allows us to deliver clear, reliable quality with all the features you could possibly want. That's the fiber difference, and it's one that Metronet is passionate about bringing to communities throughout the Midwest. To learn more about how you can have fiber optic services in your home or business, call or visit us at one of our local retail stores.
Thanks, Matthew. That's really helpful. Rather than me telling you about it, you get to see exactly, you know, what what the service is. So we're gonna go through this page just very, very quickly. And I just wanted to stress on that video that it's fiber to the home. And if you if you saw that on there, it is literally every single home gets a piece of glass or light in their own highway, if you will. So on this first page here, if you read the first sentence, it says, fiber optic internet to the home, I'm sorry, a fiber optic connection to the homes, the technology of the future, able to keep up with rapid demands and expectations that consumers have today. As I mentioned earlier, we wrote this about a year ago, and this was true then. And then, given everything that's happening now with people working from home and distance learning, this has never been truer than it is right now. So for us to be able to future-proof communities has been a wonderful thing for us. As far as our history, we've been doing this for fifteen years. This is nothing new. This isn't a Johnny come lately, people going, man, there might be a business here. We've been doing this for fifteen years. It is not not our first rodeo. As you could see there, we started in two thousand four. In two thousand five, our first community was Greencastle, Indiana. In twenty ten, we are in nine communities, and right now we are in a hundred. And we continue to continue to grow. And to give you some context on our growth, we added seventy new associates to our team just last month. So seventy new employees came on to Metronet. You know, given that there's what, twenty to thirty million people out of work right now, we can't hire quick enough because of the demand. Seventy associates hired. If you go to our website right now, metronetinc.com, we currently have eighty five job postings looking to hire people to continue this technology. And to the context locally, our Ames storefront, just not too far from there, we just hired Drake University. Maddie is she's our marketing coordinator. She's a Drake alum. We have an Iowa State alum who's gonna be our customer care associate. So, you know, when we get to these communities and start building, there's a lot of people, a lot of job opportunities as well. So I just wanted to make sure that that didn't get lost there. So again, continued to growth. That gives a little bit of our history. So again, continued to grow. That gives you a little bit of our history. As far as the fiber, 100%. And the one thing I stress on there is that it is residential and it is business. We have over 170,000 customers right now that's residential. And we also have 9,000 business customers. And why that's important is as companies, you know, people are working from home and companies are moving around. If they're looking to come to your community or the neighboring community, one of the questions they're going to ask is what is your infrastructure? Is it the old twisted pair copper or is it fiber? And I think that's where we make a big difference. As far as the services there, you see there, we have the same suite of services that the incumbent has. We have internet, TV, and phone. You can pick and choose. You can go online. Pick whichever one you want. We have different speeds, 100 over 100, 200 over 200, 500 a gig. And what's nice that we have that's really important is our service is symmetrical. And what that means, if you go to your provider now, they might say, yeah, you have 100 meg. Well, that's 100 meg download and may want to go home tonight and check what your upload speed is. At MetroNet, what you get is if you buy the 100 over 100, you get 100 download, you get 100 upload. And why upload is so important right now is with everybody working from home and distance learning. If you, you know, your mom's an architect and she's got to send a drawing out, you know, dad reads x-rays and he has to get an x-ray out and, you know, the son or daughter has to send an art project. You have to upload those as well. It is now important that your upload speeds match your download speeds. With respect to TV, as it mentioned in the video, we don't have to compress our video. We send our video out as is, and it's crystal clear. And phone as well, the quality of the phone service is fantastic. But I just wanted to make sure that we understand that we offer all the services that other providers offer right now, internet, TV, and phone as well. Next one on there, if you look the bottom, we are in eight states. We've grown, you know, you see there Minnesota, Iowa, Illinois, Indiana, Michigan, Kentucky. We launch in Florida on November 1st, and we are launching in Ohio next week. So the demand continues to be there and we continue to grow. Where it talks about superior customer service, one of the things that we are graded on is called the NPS. And some of you may know it's called the net promoter score. So every month I sit down and we go over what our score is and how we are comparing to the rest of the industry. How are we servicing your residents? Are we installing them correctly? When we're putting the cable, the fiber in the ground, are we doing restoration? And I have to answer to that. So that's very, very important to the company. And as we speak right now, we basically, we're 30% higher than the peers in our industry. That's how painstakingly we take customer service. Because one of the things I'm going to tell you is we come to town and we inherit all the costs. We're not asking for you for a nickel. We will pay the, we pay to build it. We pay to maintain it, and we have to come in and be beyond. We can't go in there lobbing grenades. We have to make sure we're taking care of the customers because we're your residents, because we have to recoup our costs on that in the way of customers. So just want to make sure that everybody understood that. We pay the freight and we build out your community. The next page there is kind of more of a recap, if you will. If you could scroll up a little bit, Matthew, again, we've been in business since 2005. Our headquarters are in Evansville, Indiana. Our rapid growth over 200% in the past three years. Currently in over 100 communities. This is direct to the home. Again, I want to reiterate, this is fiber to your home. It's not to the curb. It's not copper fittings and that, you know, from the curb to your home. Our communities are some of the first to become a fiber optic, to become a future-proofed community. Only 20% of the communities right now in the country future-proofed, are fiber to the home. I mean, what a great legacy for this, for this group here and this leadership to bring fiber to the home in Clive, Iowa. The other thing is we don't have any data caps. You want to sum it at a terabit, they'll start charging you more. You know, we say, "Stream to your heart's content. As much as you need to do, please do." And that's becoming more and more important right now with everybody working and schooling from home. We also do pass-through pricing. So you pay video what we pay. So whatever ESPN charges us or CNN, we charge you the same amount. We don't make any money off the TV side. Quite frankly, we would rather you stream, stream your TV networks. And the last thing I get on there, which is so important, is the symmetrical. Our upload and downloads are actually exactly the same speeds. So that's kind of, I kind of went through that presentation. The only thing I want to add to that, and it's not on here, Matthew, so you don't have to keep that screen up. We just finished our build out in Lexington, Kentucky, which is now the largest gigabit city in America. And one of the things that was quoted in some of the press, the mayor gave a quote, and the mayor of Lexington said, "A citywide fiber network gives Lexington a competitive advantage as we work to attract and grow jobs," Gordon said. "MetroNet's enormous investment in our city is an investment in a brighter future for our citizens." So that doesn't matter if you're in Chicago, New York, Lexington, Clive, whatever city you are, this technology is ready. People are looking for choice. And I think we're, we're a great fit here as we are in a number of other Iowa communities. So with that said, I can answer some questions. If it's legal and construction, I'm probably not going to be your best bet. We could take notes and get into Matthew and Kathy could ask any questions on contracts. But as far as the service and where we're going, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you might have at this point.
So Joe, this is Ted Weaver. Can you speak to, who would you consider your one or two top competitors and what makes you different than them?
You know, as far as our competitors, I don't say names. It would be the service providers that you have right now. And what makes us different is the lightning fast fiber. Again, we go out, we make the investment to basically, not basically, we rebuild your city. We build a fiber optic plant, and you are getting the highway there, as you saw there. Every home is getting fiber to the home. That is the difference in a nutshell. It's fiber technology. It's future-proofed. So right now it handles a gig. We're also working on 5G. We're working on 10 gig right now to stream up to. So if the demands keep getting greater, we've already built the infrastructure. We don't have to come back in and add piping and add, you know, we don't have any leakage. Some of the operators right now, they have coaxial cable and it's just not as fast. And the beauty of ours, and I can give you testament to being in Chicago, the communities that we've already built, there's 22 in the Chicagoland area. I don't hear from them except when we go to football games or we're doing events in the community is because we have redundancy and the technology is so advanced, it doesn't go down. And it's lightning, lightning fast. And you could talk to, if you read some articles on Netflix and Amazon, it just shows that they love what we're doing because obviously people can stream more video at this point. I'll tell you another thing is that only 10% of our customers right now are taking video. Most people are streaming going forward. And with the technology that's out there now, some of the legacy, that's going to be a tough putt keeping up with all the demands.
So how long would you estimate doing the full build out for Clive based off the size of our community?
Yeah, and again, that's a construction question, but I'll give you an idea based upon all the other communities. And this is all based upon Mother Nature and, you know, getting pole releases because we have to work with the power company because we do follow power. So we would have to get some contracts done, some pole approvals. But I would say something like this would be a four to five month build out. Again, that's assuming everything goes well. But I will tell you this, I was in a few other communities in Iowa as I was, I was, you know, giving the talk about MetroNet. And when I said four to five, and the mayor stopped, he said, "You mean years?" I said, "No, no, Mr. Mayor, four to five months." He said, "I," I said, "Am I getting punked here?" I said, "No, we come in, we pay for it because what we want to do is we want to get in, we want to build it, we want to rip off the Band-Aid, get this built as quickly as possible while doing proper restoration and making sure people's backyards are put together. But if everything goes well, we get in and we get out." I'll give you another example. In Leclerc, Iowa, I was just there last Tuesday night. We signed the, signed the agreement on the 29th of July. We started construction on August 5th, and we were there last week, a month later, and we had about 70% of the underground done already. So we moved really quick. So I would say that based on everything, and don't hold me to it, but I would say about a four to six month build out.
Thank you.
I'm going to jump back in and try and self-mute it there and didn't realize it. So Ted, thanks for starting with questions. So Joe, I'm going to ask a little bit more about construction because this is probably the biggest issue, I think, in the community is, is the right-of-way construction is, you know, fiber to the home, et cetera. And as you know, that's disruptive, that's very disruptive. So a four to five month build out is pretty aggressive. I've heard numbers higher than that. You know, Matt, I don't know if you want to add anything, but, but I want to make sure that we're laser beam focused on that piece of it in terms of, you know, build out.
Yeah, no, I'd be happy. Talk a little about what Kathy mentioned to you.
Yeah, and so, yeah, this is something from a staff perspective. Obviously, we've been very interested in discussing, just understanding that. We've never had something like this happen in our community of an overbuild of our entire city operating in the right-of-way all at one time in such a short timeframe. So from obviously staff standpoint and public works standpoint, we've been talking quite a bit with Kathy and Joe and their construction team about what does that really look like? And in terms of getting the permits all lined up and getting time to review the permits. And, and as you know, we would have right-of-way or boring crews. And just so for the council's clarification there, and Joe can speak to this a little bit. MetroNet's intent is to be wherever, wherever the electric is. So wherever we have overhead lines, they would be on overhead. Wherever there is underground, they would be underground. And so that's a little less than 30% of our community that's overhead, mainly the east portion of the community and then along university. We have some overhead lines all the way through, but for the most part, it's boring. That would be occurring, and this would be happening in neighborhoods that aren't used to having that kind of activity. Obviously, on the arterial roadways, we've become very accustomed to having boring contractors in our community. And so this would be new. And I think one thing we've talked a lot about with MetroNet, and they've shared a lot of information about how aggressive their communications are in terms of residents and businesses about, here's when we're coming, here's when we're going to be there, we're going to be doing construction, here's where you can find information. And I'll let Joe speak to that a little bit more in detail and how they keep us surprised. But it'll definitely be a heavy lift from a city staff standpoint to both keep up with MetroNet's activities and then also the other right-of-way activities that are happening. And I know this council, we've talked here recently in budgets about the need to have that dedicated staffing. And we have, you know, moved into that right-of-way specialist position where that we have now set, where we have a dedicated person. And then also Jerry Freestone, who was talking earlier on the, as the traffic supervisor now that will be the new administrator, he's been very active in these areas. So there's going to definitely be some staff planning on our part to just kind of absorb the amount of activity that'll be happening here. And then also I think there's a community communication aspect to this of really informing all of our residents and our businesses, but particularly the residents where they're not used to this type of activity in front of their home, in front of their house, between the sidewalk and the curb of, you know, what, a lot of people don't realize that, you know, this is allowed to happen in that, in that space. And so how are we educating them on that? And I've actually had some conversations with some of our neighboring communities that Joe and his team are talking about with bringing MetroNet to those communities. While Urbendale and Johnston have already developed letters of agreement with MetroNet. And in Grine, they're also talking to Grimes and Windsor Heights. Is how can we have maybe if, when this does happen, if this is all happening at the same time in our communities, how can we do some shared communications, both with MetroNet and through our city mediums to really educate folks on what's going to happen here and because of that short timeframe? So I know that's a long answer to your question, Your Honor, but staff has talked about this quite a bit in terms of just dealing with this in such a short timeframe. And granted, the benefits are, you know, our community gets fiber across the entire part of the community, basically, in a very short timeframe, much faster than what's happening in other communities. So that's the benefit, but there definitely will be some pain in that one year. And Joe and his team are familiar with that. And, and at least every indication that I've received from them is their willingness to work with us, to give us abilities to make sure that we've got time to turn permits around and not be unreasonable with those expectations as well.
Matt, thank you. Joey, Joey, real quick.
Yeah, as far as follow-up, and Matt, will you guys be doing the locates for us?
So we would be doing the locates just on the city utilities. So that's a key thing. So we would just be doing on the city utilities and not the electric and gas and other telecoms that are in the right-of-way. So we only control a portion of that, you know, obviously water and sewer. One thing that's good for the council to know in our right-of-way regulations, and we've already shared this with the MetroNet construction team, is we currently do not allow fiber installations or any underground installations of telecom on the water main side of our street. So that helps a little bit in terms of our own locates. But again, there still will be a lot of locates. And, and to the resident, you know, those calls, MetroNet has a very good process that they set up to make sure that they're fielding the calls. But inevitably, some of that's going to come to us, and that's been the experience in other communities. So it's just going to be something that we will have to manage as a, as an organization to facilitate this.
And the reason I asked you that, Matt, because obviously we, the reason why we probably wouldn't and we haven't like overwhelmed communities because like I said, we do restoration the same day. So we don't do like seven miles and then come back two days later. Whatever we build that day, we do the restoration. So we're not moving at that fast a clip. And if you're doing locates and, you know, you're, you have the permits, we can only work as fast as you locate and do permits also. So what you'll see it'll happen is we'll get into a groove, we'll get into a good rhythm. And, you know, if we're taxing you, then we'll pull back a little bit. But again, the goal is to get in and out as quickly as possible. Obviously, you guys have some skin in the game and some control as well.
Yeah, one thing I'll add, oh, sorry, just real quick, Ted, Councilman Weaver.
Go ahead.
One thing I'll add to on the overhead line component of this is similar to Mid-American. So, and now we had a discussion with this with the city council, edstrategic planning about kind of community resiliency, and we're going to evaluate kind of our overhead pole situation in our community, what we have left and what makes sense as we're doing road construction projects of whether to go underground. One thing that MetroNet will be required to do as well as other telecoms that are on mid-am's poles is when we take mid-am underground, all of them go underground with them. And that's been very clear in the conversations that we've had with MetroNet representatives is that at first that they intend to install in the poles, but as soon as we make mid-am go underground, they go underground too. And so that is a package deal. I just wanted to make sure.
At their expense, Matt?
It depends. It normally would be at their expense. It depends on their, their deal with mid-am. It's more on the arrangement with the electric company.
But Matt, what you're saying as it relates to that though, is roughly 30% of the community is on poles now. You don't anticipate other areas changing as a result of this, or do you?
In terms of going from underground to poles?
Either way, actually.
I would anticipate, well, from a staff perspective, we wouldn't. One thing we've talked about and has included a lot of these letter agreements from other cities is they have to have, it has to be an extenuating circumstance for them to have to set a new pole for any reason. So we would keep things underground as much as possible. That is our goal.
Yeah, that's, and that's why I brought that up because in our meeting earlier with MetroNet staff, and obviously this is just after the duration of storm, right? So it's, it's, I think, I think it's our feeling that, that underground is the best, that preserves service and, you know, and guards against outages. So that's why I asked that question. Ted, did you have another question?
Yeah, I did. Joe, you're talking about restoration. So if I'm a typical homeowner living on the west side of Clive with no above-ground wires, everything's underground, what would I expect as far as, you know, you coming in? Are you tearing up yards or what does that mean?
Well, we have to put the fiber through the backyard and the easement. Like we said, we'll follow power and, you know, I didn't mean to say that we go in and lob grenades, but we literally, we'll bore, you know, the, what's called the conduit through there that will pull our fiber through. So we'll go through there and some of it will trench, but most of it is boring. And then we just come back and if there's a hole, like a hand hole where, and one thing to remember too, I should tell you that everything that we put in, we call them flowerpots that we tap into, like it'll be eight in someone's backyard and we have eight separate homes who can get service. Those are all flush with the ground. We don't have any utilities above ground. Everything is flushed to be grown with the green cover. But we have to get the fiber back there. We have to get the conduit back there, which does take a little bit of some boring and some, especially the underground and obviously maybe some, especially the underground and obviously maybe a little bit, it's not much trenching though. And then we come back and just put the dirt back, put the seed back. If we have to, you know, an area around it that might, you know, need a little, you know, TLC, we'll put some seed there and we water it. And so, no, it's not like we're digging 15 foot deep holes. And it's just basically getting the, you know, the conduit back to where it has to run in the public easement and then backfilling from there.
Hi Joe, this is Eric Klein. A couple of questions for you. The first one is you filed a statewide franchising fee for video. And just to make sure that we both understand our intent, you intend to follow this up with voice and data through your fiber networks?
So in other words, that, that will make those services available?
Okay.
Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Yes, it will be a full suite of services. It will be internet, telephone and, and TV.
Thanks. That, that's where I thought. I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same sheet of music. The, the second question, Joe, the second question.
Because that's, because that's a great question, because that's what people, they hear fiber and they think it's internet only. But no, to your point, it's all three.
Thanks. The second question, you know, most of the complaints with the Better Business Bureau regarding MetroNet was on installation, i.e. your contractors have potentially cut through other lines or sprinkler systems. And secondly, the bulk of the complaints with Better Business Bureau regarded restoration of properties. Both of these come down to both the use of contractors and customer service. How do you intend to rectify these situations with the citizens of Clive regarding these two aspects?
Yeah. And I'm not sure it's to rectify. And trust me, we're not perfect. There, I'm sure we've had, you know, some issues with restoration and that, but I don't know exactly what you're speaking to specifically. But as I mentioned, our NPS scores, we go out of our way for customer care. We're footing the entire bill to build out and it's not cheap going, you know, every single home. So as far as specifics, I'd have to see exactly what you're talking, but we do everything we can because we have to keep the lights on. I mean, we're, we're investing a lot of money into these communities and it doesn't do us any good to not do proper restoration and proper installs. Do we have a few hiccups? Absolutely. Every company does. But that's why we manage it as tight as we can. That's, that's what I'm compensated on more than anything, is making sure that people get the service that, you know, when they, when we go out there and go door to door and we say your bill's going to be this much money, that it is that much money. So people don't get surprises when they get their first invoice. We make sure, especially with what's going on, that we're taking all precautions as far as masking and gloves and all that. So again, we do have a few hiccups here and there, but for the most part, I mean, we really, really want, because we have to, because no one else is putting this investment into these communities. And for us to recoup that, we've got to be on our game.
And I guess that comes down to customer service. And that's, that's my main question right there, is a follow up from MetroNet's customer service project to alleviate issues like this with restoration installation.
Yeah. And we have a ticketing system right now that people can go online if there's an issue. And we, we respond to 95% of those tickets with literally within 24 hours. The vast majority of the tickets that we get are, people will say, I have a invisible dog fence, or I have a sprinkler system, or when are you coming here? And so we get back to those people within 24 hours. Again, we're compensated on that to make sure we get that done. I mean, it's just a very important initiative for us.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And the one thing I, I will add real quick is as far as Matt mentioned this, as far as restoration, I'm sorry, is coming to town and 30 days out, if this comes to fruition, we'll send out a 30 day letter and we will, 30 days prior to shovel and dirt, we will say, hey, MetroNet's coming. Here's who we are. Here's what we are. Just kind of keep a lookout for us. So that goes out 30 days prior. Two weeks prior to us shovel and dirt, we will send out a postcard. They'll get a green colored postcard that'll come in the mail and we'll say, MetroNet coming to town. We'll be there in two weeks. Seven days prior, we do a lawn dart in the front yard. So we'll look at strategic place where people may, maybe they put out their, their garbage cans or it's by their mailbox. So they will get a lawn dart. And then if it's a community, the week of or the day of, we will put signs in the front saying, MetroNet is here. Any questions? We'll have the website on there that people can go and can, you know, if they have any questions or concerns. So I have to tell you, I've, I've been in the industry for 40 years. I've been in the cable industry. I retired for a few years. I came back to this company because I love what they're doing. I love the product they have. I love how they treat their customers. I love how they treat their associates. We wouldn't be growing at the pace that we're growing if we weren't, we're not perfect. But if we weren't doing it right, we, we wouldn't be expanding like there's no tomorrow. I, I've never been busier and word gets out that we're, we're now speaking with you. There'll be another person calling us saying, you know, when are you guys coming to town here? So I'm really proud to be an associate here. Again, we work our best to, to make your, make your job easier. So when you say, yeah, MetroNet's coming, that it's a good decision on your part. And it's not all lollipop and gum drops. I'll tell you that right now. We have a few hiccups because again, we're going in the easement, as you all mentioned, people aren't used to it. Some people haven't been in there for 35 years. But we really, really, you know, dot our i's and cross our t's to make sure we're doing the best job we possibly can.
That's all. Great discussion and, and questions. I want to make sure that we get questions from everyone. John, do you have any questions?
Will the consumer in Clive pay basically what is being paid right now? If we looked at the rate sheet at other communities, is it going to be comparable?
That's a good question. I don't, like I said, I don't normally talk construction or rates because rates change, but our pricing is fairly standard. Actually, it is. If you, in fact, if you go on our website, you'll see the offerings that we have. So yeah, our packages are pretty much the same. And I would say in over 90% of our communities. And again, we have to be competitive. We have to, otherwise we won't stay in business.
Thank you.
Okay. Susan, any questions for Mr. Salerno?
I did have a question about the underground versus overhead. I think it's mostly been answered, but I'd just like to mention that a friend of mine who lives in Davenport said that the word there on some of what caused the damage during the duration was that the lines that MetroNet had been stringing in an effort to be conservative ended up being too tight and contributed to causing more poles to fall and taking some of the other service. Do you have any awareness or comment on that?
I'm not aware of that. So our, our fiber cable was pulling down poles? I, I, I think it was the 130 mile an hour winds. I, I, I don't know anything of that. I haven't heard anything of that. I, I saw the video of the, oh, you guys lived it. What am I telling you? So I, I don't know anything of that. I will, I'll certainly ask that question and get back to you, but I don't know if, if our specific because of the, you know, how much, you know, looping or unlooping we didn't have on there caused poles to fall down. I, I would have heard about that if that were the case, but I'll, I'll certainly check into it and get back to Matt. Okay?
Sure. That's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Matt, you, any questions for Joe?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yeah, proceed.
I can hear you. Okay, sorry. I have several if it's okay. Can we get, you know, a price structure, kind of the cost to the consumer over maybe your last three years for, for maybe city or region, just to kind of judge what it costs when you first come in and then the cost after a, you know, two year period, three year period, what that looks like on an average for multiple cities?
So what our pricing has been, say, in an Illinois market that's three years old, basically like every six months?
Sure. That'd be great.
Sure, we could do that.
Okay. And then a question on the, to the fiber to the house. You're running conduit, I heard you say, to the back of the house. You're, you're in a eight house flower pot.
It's eight or 12. Don't, don't quote me on the numbers.
Yeah, yeah. Those numbers don't matter. How you're getting it to the house? Are you trenching it in? Are you, are you running conduit to the house as well?
No, not conduit. It would be, it would be underground. We would just do a drop bury. We would bury, and I think it's about 12 to 18 inches underground to the home, from the backyard to the home.
Do you own then that fiber from the flower pot to the home? Who, who, who takes care of the upkeep?
Oh, we do.
Okay.
We do. Absolutely. The entire plant, yeah, we do.
So if I wanted to switch at some point, companies, how do you deal with that fiber that's coming into my house from your flower pot?
We would probably just disconnect it is what we would do, like you would of the, yeah, we'd leave it in the ground there. That way, if you sold your house, you could tell them, hey, you know, yeah, one of the things that having fiber communities, it adds about potentially, despite the Wall Street Journal, not me, could potentially add 3% to the value of your home. So and Councilman Weaver, I believe you're in real estate, so maybe you could speak to that as well. But, you know, that's one of the things that, that the Wall Street Journal was mentioning, that people are looking for communities with fiber. So even if you decide to switch away from us, you could say, yep, the fiber's right there. There's the flower pot. If you want to switch back to, you know, gig service, future proof service, you know, it's available.
Couple other just quick questions. I know there'll be many. One concern of mine, Mayor, is the discussion we had in strategic planning and is the overhead. And I think this last storm showed that. And to Susan's point as well, 30% of the eastern side who might already be struggling in fiber and, and internet connectivity and, you know, on and on, were pretty susceptible to those storms and those winds. And so I want to make sure that it's not, you know, somewhat up to mid-America if, if they go underground when we choose the cost is bared by the city in any way or the resident, that we look at putting that underground. I mean, Harbach is an example. It's on the eastern side. We're looking at putting it underground now. And tires, Discount Tires did a great job negotiating with the city on underground there and taking it at our expense, unfortunately, but going underground there. So that is a big one for me over here. And to see what happened, sister living in Cedar Rapids and such of those lines going down, no internet for weeks, you know, on and on. It is a big concern, but we can tackle that later. The customer service side of that, I appreciate that. It is a big deal. Where's that call center located that Iowa or Clive would be using?
Well, we have, we have a call center that's in Evansville, which is our, where our headquarters are. I believe we have one in Paducah. And we, we'll have a storefront in Ames. I don't know if we're adding one in that, in the, in the Clive area. So I don't know. That would be a Kathy question if we're doing that. I don't know if there's plans if she spoke to that. But they are here in the states and they are in, in Evansville and in Paducah is where our call center is.
Okay. I mean, I would encourage, obviously biased, but I'd encourage one in Clive, but I would certainly encourage one in central Iowa. I work in an industry that call centers are out of state and is a major problem. It can be in the states. It can be in Illinois, which it happens to be, but they're major issues and even more so when it comes to storms and other events, that those call centers are outside of the area. You just, you just don't get the response. But that's a greater one for you and your company. I mean, but if, you know, other cities are coming on board, hopefully you take a look at that.
Sure.
I think my last question really, you mentioned 70 employees came on in the last, was it month or six months?
Yeah, it started in the month of August.
How many of those positions or how many total positions were budgeted for this fiscal year prior to the pandemic?
Oh, I don't know that. I don't know that off the top of my head. I, I would say it hasn't, I, I don't know. I'd be lying if I said 48. I, I don't know the answer to that question. Have we hired more since then? Not really. I mean, we've always, we've been successful before the pandemic. I should make that clear. It wasn't the pandemic hit and everyone's like, oh my God, everyone's working from home and schooling from home. We've been, you know, we were in Davenport, Bettendorf two years ago. And just the success that we've experienced there has just led us to come through the rest of Iowa. So we, we've been wildly successful even before the pandemic. But, you know, unfortunately that the pandemic hit and, and for us, we have been busier. But I don't know how many were and weren't before the pandemic or after.
I think to me, a number matters if anyone's wondering. It matters, it matters to me for, for your growth, right? If you want to say 70 came on in a month and you're, you're, you're speeding up the growth of your company. The circumstances matter on, on how you're speeding it up as well, if it's natural growth or growth on the pandemic. Last thing I'll say is just more of a comment is I would, Matt, really looking into these answers that have been asked by a few council members, Susan's and others, of looking at those answers. Eric's, when we ask the questions of trouble, we, I haven't heard the answers to those yet. And so I'm, I will be looking forward to seeing that in a response to those direct questions in the future.
Okay, very good. Good discussion, good questions. And Matt, why don't you outline for us next steps?
So next steps from the staff side of things is Kathy and her team have shared a draft of a letter of agreement that was executed with the City of Johnson, the City of Urbendale. I've shared that with legal counsel and staff. We're currently going through that to take a look at. So essentially how I would frame it is MetroNet is interested in doing this. It is a question of how does the city want to establish the relationship? And our neighbors to the north have decided to do so. And it's not giving any exclusivity to MetroNet. It is more just setting the terms for how our residents are going to be communicated with, how some of these questions that have been asked tonight related to how overhead poles are going to be managed, when they do go underground at some, if they do go underground at some point, how MetroNet would react to that. And, and then also in, in City of Johnson's letter, for example, required that MetroNet would be installing fiber to at least 90% of the properties in Clive. And I think that's an important part of this discussion. I know this is something the council is very interested in in terms of, is making sure that we're providing it to the whole community or a company is coming in to provide it to the whole community and that there isn't certain parts of the community that are left out. And it's kind of that ubiquitous internet access concept. So, or broadband concept. So those are some things that we're working through to bring back to you all. At the same time, there's a lot of other things that are going on. I know the Greater Des Moines Partnership and the NPO are having discussions on regional broadband study to kind of get an understanding of what the infrastructure is in the metro area. I've had some informal conversations with HR Green about, you know, helping the council through a kind of a visioning on community broadband. You know, MetroNet is one piece of this in terms of this conversation. But I know the council at strategic planning, you prioritized having a little bit broader visioning conversation, what that looks like and how we fit in and maybe the whole metro area, what it means for economic development. So I will be coming back to you on that as well. So our intent would be is probably likely by October to likely bring back a draft letter of agreement for your review and consideration. And, and then also later this year, bringing back kind of how we would manage this as a staff, as we have further conversations with MetroNet and their intentions to make sure we understand kind of the key dates and times and turnarounds for permits and how public works can manage it and what that means for us. I think, you know, this is a substantial investment by MetroNet, great, the great service providing to the community. But how are we going to handle it as an organization to make sure it's successful for our residents and, and we can make sure we're communicating also to our residents on significant impacts in their neighborhoods. And I think the more we're doing that upfront and being proactive with that and working with MetroNet, the better, hopefully the better experience will be because, you know, and this is, and I'll be pretty blunt on it and you have to apologize, Joe, but you know, MetroNet has the right to do this and in the right of ways, the way the state laws are set up. So it's, it's more of a conversation of how can we work together, knowing that they have the ability and the right to do this. And this is also a substantial investment in our community of telecom infrastructure across the entire community. So it, there's a lot of facets to this, but that's kind of what the next steps that I see, Your Honor, from the staff's perspective.
Very good. Thank you, Matt. Joe, thank you. I think this, I think this gives us clear vision to some questions and, and to some next steps that we have working together over the next period of And, and to some next steps that we have working together over the next period of weeks. And I appreciate you being here tonight.
Well, thank you. Thank you. I know you guys have a lot going on and we really appreciate the opportunity to have this conversation and then hopefully move forward. So thank you.
Yeah, okay. Well, very good. Matt, if there's anything else, counsel on this topic?
I'm good, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to reports then. And Pete, I'm going to start with you.
Thank you, Your Honor. So tonight, just a quick update on our census numbers. We have about 20 days left unless there's something changing dramatically with the courts on when they will be stopping the field activities and starting the final enumeration. So you've heard me consistently report on our self-response rate. That's the rate of people who are completing the census on their own without getting asked by a census taker who will come to their home. We are now at a 79.7% self-response rate, which is over our 78.4 self-response rate in 2010. That's good. That additional 1.6% was achieved in about three weeks. We are still low in one of our precincts. That's 112.05, where we are at 60.5%. And in 2010, we had a self-response rate of 63.6. So for the last 20 days, I would expect that we'll have census takers out in Clive focusing on some of those historically undercounted areas in the city. We'll also support their work by sending another postcard out to those residents or deliverable addresses in that, in those neighborhoods. Just to remind them that folks will be in their neighborhood and that the census is something that most of their neighbors have taken care of, and we hope that they will as well because it really matters a lot for our community. We still are trailing Urbendale, but we've been closing the gap. Self-response rate in Urbendale right now is 79.9%. So we are just 0.2% behind them. And I think in 20 days, we can cross, close that gap and certainly get up into the 80s would be a wonderful response rate for us. Last thing I'll say on this as well is that the final count for Clive won't be just the self-response rate. It will be the self-response plus whatever is gathered up by the census. That final enumeration will be a total that we will have as we get later into the fall.
Pete, thank you for that. And just for my own edification, could you just provide some clarity, if you can, about some stories about the census feeling that they can wrap their efforts up about, about a month earlier or so? There's a little bit of controversy about whether they should do that or not, and I'm interested to know more about that and, and, you know, what it really means to us.
Sure. All of this is driven by the pandemic. We wouldn't be talking about counts right now had the census team been able to stay on their original schedule, which would have had, which would have had them doing most of their field work in late spring and through the midsummer months. But because of the pandemic and because of the concern about face-to-face contacts with their field staff and households, they extended the period of time when they would be doing their field work. Initially, the Census Bureau had represented that they would need until the end of October to complete that field work. More recently, the Department of Interior and the Census Bureau have said that, no, actually they can complete that by the end of September. And a number of organizations who represent under, historically undercounted groups have challenged that action and are advocating very strongly now through legal action to extend the counting activity all the way through the month of October. It's not something that is sort of affecting, I think, Clive as much as it is affecting a number of other parts of the country, a number of other cities, because historically our census tracts have been counted and counted well. That's not true, perfectly true of all of our tracts, but it's true of most of them. And it's largely true of the upper Midwest. If you look at it just on a state-by-state basis, and there are parts of every state that have some undercounted census tracts historically. But the upper Midwest states, Minnesota, Wisconsin, Illinois, Michigan, Minnesota, these are some of the states where we see the highest self-response rates that are pushing up into the almost 80% range for states. So those are the types of things that make the job of getting a complete count done much easier. We'll see how the national wave sort of takes, where the national wave takes us. It'll be something that I think is much more driven by some of the communities and cities around, and states around the country that have more historically undercounted populations than the state of Iowa does.
Pete, thank you. I appreciate, appreciate the background and clarification there. Counsel, any questions for Pete? Pete, thank you. We're going to move to Ted.
Nothing to the night, Mayor.
Thank you, Ted. Eric?
A couple of quick things, Mayor. Had a chance to attend a couple ribbon cuttings, capriata sandwiches, and also come and go with several of my fellow council members and mayors. It was good to learn about Come and Go's plans moving forward for that corner up there. So a couple of great business openings here in Clive.
And I think, Eric, just to add to that, the, the community welcome sign in front of the new Come and Go property at the southeast corner of 156th and Hickman has come in very, very well. For those of you who may have not seen that yet, I would encourage you to, to view that. Great partnership with Come and Go and putting, putting that together. Okay, thanks, Eric. John?
Nothing tonight.
I have one thing that I'd like to, to mention and an honorable mention to Lieutenant Colonel Christina Stanger. Christina, I understand that you've been promoted to Battalion Commander of the 109th Medical Battalion. And wanted to extend congratulations to you on your achievements. One of your many, many achievements in your great career. So congratulations and would sure love to hear your thoughts and comments on this latest development for you.
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. I'm among, I think, folks who dedicate their life to public service and I'm honored to serve the city of Clive and now the state of Iowa in this new position as the commander of the 109th Medevac in Iowa City. Again, it's about service above self and I know that many of you or all of you share that value and I appreciate your support on this new endeavor. I will, just for clarification, I will remain a practicing attorney. This is just my new post as a traditional guardsman for the Iowa Army National Guard.
Well, that's outstanding. Definitely we were not saying goodbye on that. But again, congratulations and Godspeed to you in that new role as you, as you lead others. So again, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Yes, ma'am. Susan?
Back in February, I had a chance to visit the 9/11 memorial for the first time. And so tomorrow I'll be thinking about that and thinking of honoring all of our first responders. I've got a couple of events next week. I'll be attending the Iowa League of Cities Conference, which is going to be virtual. So it'd be very interesting to see how that works. And then the Bravo Board is meeting on Wednesday morning. And I'm sure we'll be having some very serious discussion there.
Indeed, you will. Thank you, Susan. Let's see here. Michael?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just say if I could get some gas money to come all the way out there and see that sign over there in Come and Go, I'll fill up when I get there. Otherwise, I have no comments.
Thank you, Michael. We'll find you a coupon. Okay, Madam Counsel, anything else for the good of the order tonight?
Nothing further. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Okay, Matt?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a few things catching up this week from being out of town last week. We'll be getting the strategic plan items, hopefully the draft plan in front of you for approval at your next meeting. So I've been having some email exchanges with Lyle on that. I was really happy with how those sessions went. Appreciate the council and the executive team's time on that. I know that's a lot of hours that you all dedicate to that work and I really appreciate the end product we're able to produce there. Also a reminder, just a week from today, we'll be bidding, will be the bid date for the public safety facility when we receive the bids for all the different prime contracts. Really happy with what we're seeing, at least in the market. I know the City of Des Moines recently bid a project. Their next phase of their major municipal services facility, and they saw some, some pretty good pricing on theirs. And so hopefully that we're also seeing that good pricing on those prime contracts that will come before you at the next council meeting for approval, hopefully, that we have some good bids. And we'll have a meeting with the facility committee a week from tomorrow to review that with you all prior to putting it on the council packet. So pretty happy with where we're at with that, to actually have that with a reminder too on the groundbreaking. So we have, at this point, we're still holding October 1st, the afternoon, late afternoon of October 1st as the groundbreaking. We're still coordinating to see if we wanted to maybe do something with Urbendale there. I've also mentioned it to Supervisor Brownell when I happened to be on a phone call with him. As of right now, that's our, still our tentative date. We are working on some keepsakes for that groundbreaking, but more details to come on that as we, as we kind of work through the details there. So that is currently still our, our date. And I know I've heard from a few of you that it may or may not work. Hopefully, depending on travel and other things, so hopefully we're still able to hit that target, but and also to see if we can have our friends from Urbendale also participate. So we're still working on that, but more to come soon on that. Well, last thing I wanted to mention is to follow up a little bit on the MetroNet discussion. And my mention of the council identified as a top priority, kind of this broader community broadband discussion. And I'll be having some conversations with H R Green next week, who is actually, I believe, working on the regional broadband study with the partnership to see, you know, I want to make sure we're not doing any duplication of efforts that they may be doing at a regional scale. And so what we will do with that is I know the council desired to have a visioning process, a little public education in terms of what some opportunities are more broadly on that. And so we still hope to bring some of that forward for you. And I laid out a number of actions related to that during strategic planning, but I want to get a better understanding of the regional broadband study and just to make sure we're not duplicating efforts there. So I'll be having a, Jeff May and I will be having a Zoom call with, with Ed Barrett from H R Green on that, who's kind of their fiber expert next week. And we'll hopefully be bringing something back to you. Probably for that first meeting in October, maybe even paired with a, a letter of agreement with MetroNet and just so we can see kind of the whole picture. So working, that's kind of one thing we're hitting the ground running on because it seems like it's coming at us pretty fast with, with MetroNet's intention to start construction in 2021 in our community, which basically what they've shared with me means they want to be submitting permits or designs for permits in January of '21. So they can basically, as soon as the ground is unthought, start working. So we've been talking a lot about this at the staff level and this will definitely could potentially impact some, some of our staff, well, will impact our staff capacity, at least in public works in 2021. But as you can see, it's an aggressive schedule that they're looking at. So just wanted to circle back on that a little bit, that we've got a lot of irons in the fire related to this community broadband discussion at this point. So I'll have, Your Honor, unless there's questions?
Matt, thank you. Counsel, questions for Matt? Seeing none. Matthew, any other correspondence?
No, Your Honor. Nothing further.
Okay, thanks, Matthew. Counsel, anything else for the good of the order? Seeing none. I'm going to adjourn us at 7:23 PM. Thanks, everyone.